Order. The Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, meeting of the South Borough zoning board of appeals. We are operating tonight without a key component, that is Laura Davis, our admin, but I think we'll be able to soldier on. On the agenda, a continued public hearing for two fifty Turnpike Road comprehensive permit. Think we need to reiterate it, right? And so we have feedback on traffic and feedback on wetlands. Do you have something you want to begin with this evening or you want to look at the?
I think the only thing we would like to do briefly is there was discussion at the end of the meeting about moving some units around. James can just very briefly just show you.
Okay.
Not to go through the plan in detail, but there was discussion about moving units, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
And we know the neighbors have issues with that or concern, so I just want to give perspective, that's all. And then we can deal with the, you know, traffic and wetlands people. James, can you talk about differences?
Yep, so, Mr. Chairman, pursuant to comments from the Board of Butters and the peer review, since the last meeting, we've made several changes to realign the units. We took a, two different blocks of units here and pushed them together to moderate slope in this area. We took two different blocks of units over here and pushed them together, which allowed us to also move these units here farther from a Butters. We slightly reshaped the road, got it under one thousand feet of total length, which is one sort of trigger in the regulations. And that reshaping of the road also allowed us to pull units a little further away from the Butters to the east. And that allowed us to put in a stone line drainage swale behind all of these units, numbers three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, to carry runoff there and also absolutely ensure that there's not any increase of runoff to these abutting properties, Harvey and Palmer, and one twenty-five.
Where's the runoff to?
It's going to go down to the wetland.
Okay.
And just again, for reference, this rectangle here is number one twenty-five. That's not part of this proposal, except to run a utility easement through it. But we're running that down here, the wetland that receives most of the runoff from the site. We made other small changes, but those are the biggest ones in which were, again, partly due to board and the Butter comments, and allowed us to, I think, in several different ways, improve the design, but especially to pull these units further from the Butters and to, as I say, add a stone line swale to absolutely ensure that none of the Butters to the east will get any extra runoff.
These are very recently made, is what you're saying.
This last iteration of plans dated January thirty-first.
January thirty-first.
First showed up. Previous to that, these five units were a duplex and a group of three. These six units were two different blocks of three.
Okay.
And this allowed us, again, allowed us to, making this one block allowed to pull these units forward farther from the Butters.
So regarding the plan, where does it stand as far as your review with the Butters?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
I'm just, you're, I don't know if you've, who this has been shared with.
Yes, well, I believe this plan, that's the one dated January thirty-first, correct, James? That's been provided to the board, it was provided to the board and the peer reviewers on February twelfth, on or about February twelfth. And, yes, and it's been provided to the Butters, we've been keeping them abreast with all the changes that we have done. And we've been in open, we've had an open line of communication with them and been working with them cooperatively.
Okay, thank you.
Through Attorney St. Andre, who's in the gallery tonight.
Yep, did recognize Attorney St. Andre, so yeah, thank you, okay. All right. I mean, I'm going to admit, I have not had a chance to review that in detail. Does it, can I ask, knowing what we have as far as traffic and other concerns, is this intended to address those?
Yeah, some concerns, yes. The fire department letter, or I should say email, that has come through recently, we have not discussed at this point, and these plans do not reflect any of those concerns. That's still, those concerns are still pending and being addressed.
Okay, all right.
We would just like, per your initial comments, deal with traffic and wetlands tonight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And this was just to give an overview, because there were a lot of comments from the board about trying to move things around. And I'm not saying that you have a definitive answer.
Yeah.
But we just wanted to give you a highlight of what we did.
Okay.
Kind of help you along when you looked at the plans.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I agree with you regarding what we have for peer review. I mean, clearly, there's some traffic things to talk about as well as wetlands, but I think we also talked last time about talking more about traffic at this particular meeting.
Correct, correct.
Our traffic consultants here.
Okay.
Your traffic consultants.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
If I may, maybe give a quick introduction of the parties that are here tonight, and then we could take it off, take it from there.
Sure.
So my name is George Bonn, I'm Assistant General Counsel for Ferris Development Group. I'm here on behalf of FD two fifty Turnpike LC, the applicant, with me is attorney Louis Levine. You just heard from James Taterall, the civil engineer from Expedited Engineering. And the gallery is, for our traffic engineer is Ali Khorssani from AK Associates. And from Goddard Consulting, our wetlands consultants, are Tom Schultz and Ryan Rosini. Did I say that correctly? Rosine, my mistake. And I believe your wetlands and traffic engineers and consultants are here, so I was thinking probably diving into one of those would make most sense.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I would, again, I think maybe the traffic one makes the most sense.
Sure.
Sorry.
And since we're going to be discussing traffic first, I'll remind the board that Mr. Dirk from Viness and Associates had provided the board and the applicant a, some feedback to our initial site plans dated, I believe, November thirteenth, somewhere around there. Since then, our traffic consultant, Ali Khorssani, has submitted a response, I believe, on January twenty-first. And then Mr. Dirk had provided a supplemental response to that.
Okay. Okay, so I think, I mean, what I reviewed was from Viness, so I was going to start with them.
Absolutely.
Using that, that letter. Do we, who have from Viness? Jeffrey? If you could just identify yourself at the microphone, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. By way of introduction, my name is Jeffrey Dirk, I'm the managing partner with Viness and Associates, and we are the town's peer review consultant relative to traffic and transportation. I think, as you've heard from the applicant's attorney, we have had an opportunity to undertake a peer review of the initial materials that were submitted as part of the application. Our role as the peer reviewer for traffic and transportation is not only looking at the traffic study that the applicant had submitted, but was also looking at the site plan. And as we're looking at the site plan, the specific areas that we focus in on are the access to the property, circulation within the development, both for vehicles, pedestrians and bicyclists, and also safety. And our role in reviewing safety within the site is looking at fire truck circulation, which your fire chief will also do, accessibility in terms of getting within the development to the units themselves, and then the access provision. And I think that was one of the things that you had heard the counsel for the applicant mention as well. So we've performed a review of the initial application, we issued a letter based on that. There were two pieces, there were comments on the transportation analysis, and there were comments on the site plan. The applicant responded to our comments on the transportation analysis, and all of those comments have been addressed. We do have comments on the site plan, which were followed up by way of the issuance of revised site plans, some of which you heard presented tonight. We did review the site plans, not the latest ones that you've seen tonight, but we did offer a comment letter. So the most recent comment letters dated February eighteenth. There are some outstanding items as they relate to the site plans. Those items, some of them, we would consider minor, and they can be addressed as a part of kind of the final site plan submission. There are other items that might affect the layout of the project, and we would suggest that those are things that might want to be considered before you would close the hearing, because they may impact the number of units or the layout within the site. So they would have a material effect on the application. So as it relates to the transportation analysis that the applicant has undertaken, really as it relates to the net increase in traffic, because there was, there's an office building that's coming offline, there's some self-storage, and then there's the residential units. Multi-family residential, the residential unit type that they're proposing to build is really a low-traffic generator as you compare it to an office use. So probably not surprising, what you see is a net reduction in traffic almost across the board, or in the worst case, it's a no-change condition. So as it relates to conditions as the site and people experience traffic going in and out of the property, when the office building was fully occupied, you're not going to see really any difference between what was being generated and what the residential use and the self-storage. So from an impact perspective, we're not showing, and we agree with the applicant, that there's not going to be any impact in terms of increased delays or vehicle queuing as it relates to this project. So it's fairly straightforward from an impact analysis perspective. Things that we focused in on as they relate to safety is to make sure that there's safe sightlines coming out of the property itself. Now, as you know, Route nine, that's median divided, so it's right in, right out. So the sight distances that you need to have to make a right-hand turn are much less than if you are making a left-hand turn coming out of the property. Route nine in this area is relatively flat and level, so there's no sight distance issues as it relates to coming in and out of the property. The applicant also, applicant's traffic engineer also looked at motor vehicle crashes occurring at the driveway to see if there's any history that might relate to some geometric deficiencies or just deficiencies as they relate to the way that people are entering and exiting the property. And what they found was there's no significance in terms of crash history at this intersection, as well as the next intersection down, which is the Parkerville Road intersection. And that intersection and the discussion as it relates to emergency vehicle access, they're directly related. So what we wanted to make sure of is that anyone that wants to head westbound on Route nine that comes out of this property has to come down. They could use Parkerville Road, or they need to go down, further down Route nine in reverse direction. So the site, from the standpoint of access, just if you want to go east or west, it's a little bit challenging in terms of that. So you need to make maneuvers using local roadways or some of the other intersections on either direction along Route nine to reverse direction. So we wanted to make sure that the next intersection, which is the Parkerville Road intersection, didn't have any issues for motor vehicle crashes or otherwise that would indicate that something needed to be done to allow for use of that road. And the applicant did look at that, there is not any significant crash history there either. So from a transportation perspective and looking at impacts, we've basically said they've addressed the questions that we posed to them, and we agree that this project will not be any more impactful than the prior use of the site. So now I'm looking at the site plan, and as I mentioned, what our focus is on the site plan is looking at the access more so circulation within the property, pedestrians, vehicles, the layout of the buildings themselves, to make sure that you can get in and out of the properties without causing any issues for flow of traffic within the site or safety for a pedestrian that may be walking along the road, and then circulation. So circulation for a fire truck primarily within the site to make sure they can get in, but then once they're in, they can circulate within the development. So we did provide a series of comments as they relate to the site plan, most of those have been addressed. And as I said, there's other ones relating to signs and pavement markings that can be addressed either, you know, prior to the close of the hearing, or they could be conditions to be shown on the final site plans. But there are a couple of areas that I had mentioned were kind of material items. The first one deals with the fire truck circulation within the site. So the applicant did perform a fire truck turning analysis that showed the town fire truck entering the site from Route nine, driving through the site. And then importantly, as you're looking at the site layout, to the extent that the cul-de-sac area is still retained, showing that vehicle circulating within the cul-de-sac area. So the fire truck is able to make all of the maneuvers that are necessary to circulate within the site. One of the areas that just needs to be looked at, and I think verified by the applicant, is, as they're looking at this turning analysis, which you'll see if you look at the drawings, is it shows you the swept path. So in different colors, it'll show you the tire path as well as the bumper path. What's not shown is the aerial portion, so when you look at a fire truck, there's a piece of that fire truck, either the ladder or the bucket, that sticks over the front end of that cab. So that's high enough that if you drive through a parking lot and the vehicle is swinging, that aerial portion goes over the top of vehicles. But what you want to make sure of when you look within a project, and especially in a cul-de-sac area, is trees and light poles, because those are something that would be obstructions to that aerial portion and circulating the cul-de-sac. So what we've said is the applicant just needs to look at those areas within the cul-de-sac and make sure that anything that's close to that curb, you want it set back at least seven feet. So as you're looking at landscaping plans or the location of lighting, I'm sorry, it's not seven feet, two feet, at least two feet beyond that curb line, because that will give enough room for that aerial portion to swing as it maneuvers through the cul-de-sac area. The next item is the driveway lengths. So when you have a, when you have a house or any type of development where you're constructing a driveway, and there may be a garage or something in front of where the car is going to park in the driveway, most people don't park their cars right up against the garage door. So you leave room to be able to walk along the front of the car or around the back of the car. So the driveways need to be sufficiently long so that someone can do those maneuvers. But I think the most important thing is you don't want that rear end of the vehicle sticking out into the roadway or into the sidewalk area. So we've provided some minimum dimensions to the applicant based on those driveway lengths. So the minimum dimensions are, the driveways should be twenty-one feet long, measured from either the garage door or the face of the building, and the far edge of a sidewalk, if there's a sidewalk provided, they do have a sidewalk along one side. So that twenty-one-foot dimension would apply to driveways where the sidewalk is located. If there's not a sidewalk, that length increases to twenty-three feet. So these are minimum dimensions, and it's based on a nineteen-foot-long vehicle to fit in that driveway. And then if you figure a foot or two on either end of that vehicle to walk around, to make sure that the vehicle is either not on the sidewalk or sticking into the roadway. The applicant did provide a note on the site plan that indicated what the minimum dimensions would be. But then, as you look at the site plan, when they put the dimensions on the driveway, some of the driveways, I believe, are nineteen feet long, which would not comply with this dimension. So we've asked the applicant to go back and look at it, we've pointed out the specific unit numbers where these dimensions are not met, and asked them to go back and look at it. What I would say is there is some creativity to this, so we provided this to the applicant as guidance. So if the roadway, let's say, within the development is twenty-six feet wide, instead of like a twenty-two-foot wide, probably minimum, there's opportunities to have that length be a little bit shorter, as long as there's not a sidewalk or some other provision that the vehicle is going to stick out into. So ideally, we'd like them to comply with this, but if for some reason that they're not, then it's something that they should look at it, understanding where these dimensions come from, and at least if they can't meet it, to demonstrate that the vehicle is not going to stick out into the roadway. But our preference is really you should meet these dimensions in order to make sure that we don't have any impedances to flow within the development itself. So again, that I would consider as a material comment that should be, should be addressed by the applicant, and it should not be something that's just a note on the site plan, because as you're reviewing this, depending on the room they have, it could affect the number of units or the way that the units are laid out within the development itself. We have other comments as they relate to signs and markings, as I said, that can be added either as a part of the site plans before you close the hearing or as a condition for the final site plans. The last material comment is the emergency access. So we had raised this as a part of our initial review, and I know now that the fire department has also come back with the same, the comment for the applicant. So the concern as it relates to emergency access is those access limitations on Route nine. So if a fire truck is responding to this project, depending on which direction they're coming from, they're limited, because they can't make a left-hand turn if they're heading westbound on Route nine, and the same thing if they're going out, they're limited in terms of the left turn. So depending on where they're responding from, it does potentially lengthen the response time to get to this project. That's a little bit different than if there's an office building there, because I think the fire chief would tell you the types of responses and the frequency of responses that they have to an office building versus a multi-family residential building is different. And so they need to make sure that they've got access to serve a residential development at this site that doesn't presently exist there. So we've, we've made suggestions to the applicant to look at potentially providing a connection over to Parkerville Road. You know, sometimes even, you know, as we look at it, these suggestions are not always easily implemented by the applicant, but we had suggested that there is an easement to bring, I believe, a water line in from Parkerville Road. This emergency vehicle access east roadway, potentially, it does not, it's whatever the fire chief wants, but it doesn't mean it has to be a paved roadway itself. It can be a stabilized base material or constructed of other materials that are suitable to the fire chief, as long as a fire, as long as you can plow it when it gets snow on it, and that it has to support the weight of the largest responding emergency vehicle under all weather conditions. So you don't want something that if it gets muddy, the truck can't get through there. But we did, again, suggest that the applicant should look at that, it's ultimately up to the fire chief. But I think they've come back and also asked the applicant to take a look at that as well. So we do think that that's something that should be considered. One of the reasons for it is, as you look at the site plan, again, there's not residential there today. It's also because of how deep the site is. So that, from the Route nine all the way back into that site is quite a distance. And so if for some reason there's a blockage at the front of the site, the fire department can't get to the back of the site. Usually, you know, another option for the applicant to potentially look at is, you have a road that comes in for maybe a couple hundred feet, and then it branches off, so that the fire department then could use a different route to come to the back of the site. But, you know, that was our initial concern, is that the site now becomes very deep, and that the only way to get in or out is the one access point on Route nine. And again, the fact that the fire department has to, you know, use, you know, the same things that a resident would have in terms of if you want to go eastbound or westbound, but if they're responding, you know, as they will say, you know, seconds matter. And so being able to have an additional means to get in, if they don't have to go out to Route nine, I think, would be opportune. But again, easily, more easily said than done. And so we just raised that as something the applicant should look at. So as it relates to our peer review, again, we're complete with respect to the transportation analysis. We have some comments with respect to the site plan that I believe the applicant is still working on, and we can follow up, you know, after we receive the applicant's responses. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody get any questions from the board? Jamie? Doug, do you have any questions?
I just had a very general question. When I'm looking at the site plan that's down there, if someone could just brief me how many acres with the roundabout, and how long, just so I can get it to scale in my head for the safety issue, coming in from Parkerville?
Just quickly, the lot.
If you could, microphone.
The lot on which the proposed units are located is about four-point-eight acres.
Okay, that's small, okay.
And were you asking also?
Yeah, it's just the road length, because of the discussion on the traffic and the safety.
From the Route nine highway layout to the end of the cul-de-sac circle is nine-hundred-and-eighty-some-odd feet. It's just under a thousand.
And then out to Parkerville, I'm sorry, just one more measure from the cul-de-sac, if you were to take it from Parkerville, you may not know.
Well, that, just for reference, the depth of one-twenty-five Parkerville is two-hundred-and-ninety feet in this direction. So, I mean, even if you came in from here, you've only cut out a couple hundred feet of the length of the road. Yes, you have a second point of access for, you know, this portion of the roadway, but you would still have.
You still have that neck and the loop, got it.
Yeah, you would still have the loop by itself.
Okay, so that's where it plays you, okay, thank you.
We don't have that. Yeah, 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 go ahead.
The units are concentrated at the end, and I assume that contributes to your comment on, you know, not having a, just a single access, because that's a long throw, and there's blockages, that could be an issue. And I know we look for second means of access, and I'm not suggesting that the applicant can do this, but if instead of it ending in that little cul-de-sac there, if it looped back on itself, so at least with respect to the area where the majority of the units are concentrated, would that add a degree of safety, so at least there's not backing up and turning around? Or are you looking for something more like full second means of access?
The ideal situation is full second means of access. And again, it really has to do with just the ability of the fire department. If they can use Parkerville Road to go in and out, it just saves them from having to do maneuvers out on Route nine. But, as I said, that's kind of the ideal situation, and we encounter situations that are not ideal at all, and, you know, very often. So something like that would be acceptable. The other thing, of course, that the fire chief looked at, and they may be doing this anyways, is what other type of fire protection do they have? Are there all the units, you know, sprinkled, things like that? So, I mean, when the fire chief looks at it, they take all of those other factors into consideration. And so, you know, it may be that the looped configuration with, you know, all the buildings being sprinkled, things like that may be something that sways them to say, no, so one means of access is fine, because I've got the secondary protection that will, you know, knock down a fire and give me time to respond, given the fact that I don't have the secondary means of access. So I think all of those things, as the applicant is looking at it, would be a reason, if they can't provide it, to submit to the fire chief to see if it's acceptable to them.
Do we know if it, the units are sprinkled, because I don't think it meets that use code.
That, I don't know. But again, they may not meet that, but that's some things that applicants propose when they are trying to, when they can't provide the secondary means of access, and the fire chief considers that when they don't have a secondary means.
And there's actually a history of forty-B cases where that's a mitigating factor, too. See, the fire chief, and I'm not sure what this was geared to, the fire chief said another proposal would be an area, and I don't know if this was related, because it's all just in bullet points for him. Another proposal would be an area possibly between twenty-six and twenty-seven, where they could back into to turn around so that they aren't backing onto Turnpike Road. So I'm not sure I understand exactly what that, what he means there or where that would be on the site plan, but.
Yeah, I'd have to look at that and see where he's speaking of. So it may be something that it's allowing him to do some maneuvering without having to do maneuvering directly.
Where cars are passing each other, too.
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have any, you have responses regarding the peer review?
If I may have a moment?
Sure.
Unless the board wishes to hear from our consultant, I don't think we can add anything at the moment.
Okay, so.
I don't think we could, we don't, I don't think we need to provide anything else at the moment, is what I'd say.
All right, but, I mean, regarding the concerns, I would say we, I mean, and the change in plans, we still, there's still work to be done.
Yes, actually, I will, I will mention this, I had just spoken to Mr. Taterall and Mr. Khorssani regarding the driveway length. And Mr. Taterall had addressed the driveway length, I believe, in his most recent comment letter. HSH had also made a comment about the driveway length, so he addressed it there. In terms of the secondary access, I believe the Butters, and I don't want to speak for the Butters, I'll let Attorney St. Andre speak on behalf of them, but the Butters, I believe, are very against having a secondary access to Parkerville, to or from Parkerville. We want to respect that, of course, so I'd like the board to consider that when weighing this. Another thing worth mentioning, following one of Jay's comments about having the units sprinkled, three, when there's a building of three or more units, those units. three, when there's a building of three or more units, those units have to be sprinkled. And there are several of those.
Was it three or four?
It's three now.
Three now.
Okay.
I think, you know, I read the fire chief's comments the way Jay did. And, you know, I had, you know, I appreciated the bullet points, but I had some questions. So I think what we'd like to do between now and the next meeting is to, you know, further conversation, you know, with the fire department and, you know, put in to play, you know, sprinkling issue and some of his comments and see where we come out. You know, recognizing that the neighbors are not in favor of the second access. And so it's easy for us to say, we'll do it, but they're not going to be happy about it. At the end of the day, it's the board's decision, you know, what should go on. But I think if we can get some dialogue with the fire chief to get a greater understanding, you know, this business between 27 and the other unit and sprinkling, then I think we can, you know.
What's the, what's the title look like on that easement? Is that even feasible? I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to go down the road and discuss that if it's just purely, if it's purely a utilities.
No, I don't disagree with you. I don't think we pursued it because I think we've been trying to avoid. I haven't looked into it, and I'll look into it.
If it's not even a possibility, no one should spend any energy on it.
Look into it, and I agree with you that there's a good chance that it may not, you know, permit a road.
I literally am like on Google Maps, and I'm just like, I just don't see how it's even possible. So why are we talking about it?
And what, I'm happy that you said that, but in what aspect is.
I just want to make sure, like.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it exists in the registry, so I would just.
No, 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 I, I promise between now and the next meeting, we'll take a look at it. I'll send you a copy of the easement. And then, you know, I'll send you a couple of sentences to what I think we can do or not do. I mean, I'm just looking at it, it's a rectangle, there are no radius. I guess I could ask Mr. Dirk, but I mean, it's just a 30-foot, you know, it's a rectangle, but I don't know how a fire truck with radiuses is going to get in and out anyway. I mean, I don't. No, but I'm just saying is, you need to be able to turn in and out, you know, and I don't even, you know, from just a layperson's standpoint, I don't see that being very easy for a fire truck, you know.
So just, I just point a clarification back to, so you said any three or more units attached would be sprinkled?
I believe so, yes.
Because again, I think only 20, 21, and 19 and 18 are duplexes.
Yes.
I just wish, it'd be great to get confirmation of that too, because just understand what your baseline is, that'd be helpful to know.
Well, between now and the next meeting, we'll provide you the applicable provision of the code. Okay, and then indicate which ones will or won't be. Couple and a half.
Correct.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, the future issue.
I mean, that makes sense to me, that clearly, I mean, my take on it is the fire chief clearly has to approve of whatever the plan is here. I think Jay made a great point regarding the deed, that might find that's not even possible. But as Mr. Dirk mentioned, you know, there's different ways to do this. It doesn't have to be a second access road, so, okay. Did you have anything else?
No, I think that'll do it for us in terms of traffic.
Okay, all right. If I could, I don't know if there's any public comment or questions.
No hands raised right now.
I was, um. We can, yeah, we can handle it separately. I was going to suggest maybe we wait till the end, but it might be, might be better to do, to go right at it, yeah.
John Palmer, 131 Parkerville Road. So I am a direct abutter. And I live a stone's draw from the intersection of Route 9 and Parkerville. And just with regard to the traffic study that was done, yeah, I'm kind of questioning not so much the increase in traffic flow, but the safety at the intersection of Route 9 and Parkerville. And I've been there for 10, 12 years now. There's been at least a half a dozen accidents at that intersection. So, and I think there's perhaps a problem with the acceleration lane and then the merging of that lane with the intersection at Parkerville. So I just wondered if you had comments on that.
Yeah, so I think you, what you found is it wasn't figure out what the word you used exactly. I think you didn't find something significant, or I'll let you, I'll let you. Sure, no. You know, it's, I guess, an unfortunate catch-up phrase, but the way it's, it's, there's not an implication that there's no crashes happening. The way that we look at the, whether in intersection, we'll call it safe or unsafe, and I hate to use those terms, is there's, there's specific measures and it's based on the number of crashes that are happening in relation to the volume of traffic going through an intersection. An intersection that has a large volume of traffic, you know, there's going to be crashes. And the question is if that, what we call the crash rate. So the crash rate is the number of crashes per million vehicles going through the intersection. And the state publishes crash rates for signalized and unsignalized intersections in the Commonwealth and in specific areas. So we can look at crash rates for intersections in the town and compare the crash rate at that intersection to the average crash rate. And what was found is that that crash rate is lower than the average. So it doesn't imply that there's no crashes, and exactly what you described, it shows up in the data. What the data suggests is that that number of crashes is less than what would be expected based on the volume of traffic going through the intersection. But that doesn't imply that there's not need for some improvements in the future to better the situation that you're talking about. But the type of crashes that are happening are more, there are some side swipe crashes where someone's coming out of that acceleration lane, trying to get into Route 9, and then they're hitting a vehicle that's going straight through. That's the type of crashes that may be what you're experiencing out there as well, as well as vehicles decelerating and rear-end crashes out there. But again, the number of crashes in relation to the volume of traffic is not disproportionate. It's below the state average. The other measure that they look at is the severity of the crashes. And you often hear people say, making statements about saying, no one cares until someone gets killed. The other measure they look at is how many property damage versus fatalities versus personal injury. And then they rank intersections based on the severity of crashes. And this location also fell below a severity indicator that would say it's a high-crash location. So it doesn't mean there's not crashes happening, it's just the type and number are not at a level where it's considered a high-crash location. Doesn't mean there's not improvements needed, but that, that's kind of what we're looking at is to say, is there a significant safety issue based on the type of crashes that are happening? And a lot of what's happening is driver error rather than injury-type crashes related to the geometry of the intersection.
Don't you feel safer?
So I guess my question then would be, there was nothing in the traffic study that would trigger the need to look at that intersection as a safety issue?
That's correct. I mean, to the extent that there are the types of things that you're talking about is more of a long, it's something like a mass DOT issue. But the project, as it would impact those conditions, it's not going to cause, shouldn't cause a significant, it shouldn't cause an increase in crashes based on what they're talking about for the level of activity that's there. It certainly doesn't mean that what's going on out there today is going to get any better. It just shouldn't get any worse, if that's a good way of putting it.
I guess I'd just like to go on record then in saying that, you know, it's a, in my experience, a dangerous intersection to begin with and probably problematic intersection to begin with, just given the way the acceleration lane comes down from the 250 Turnpike property and merges with the acceleration lane for traffic exiting Parkerville.
Thank you. All right, then, if we don't have anybody else who, in the public, we can go into the wetlands. Sorry. Go ahead.
Jeff Oila, 133 Parkerville Road. I'm also in a butter to the proposed development. Just a question on the access road for the proposed development and the storage facility. Will that be a shared road or two different, two different roads? And what will the? Okay.
It'll be a shared road. The contractors' yard parcel will grant a access easement to the 40B parcel so that they can share one access road via Route 9.
Okay, so one access point for the storage facility as well as the contractor's building that you're proposing as well?
The self-storage building has its own access point, as I'm sure you're aware of. It has its own driveway. And then a little bit right, right past it is the access road to the contractors' yard and then ultimately the 40B development.
Okay, all right. So you kind of have multiple points coming.
Two, one is dedicated for the self-storage building, and then the other one is for contractors' yard and 40B development.
And 40B.
They are both existing, though.
Okay, thank you.
Paul Carter, 6 Hillside Avenue, I'm not on a butter. Looking at the plan, maybe I misunderstand the plan. It looks like some of the parking for the current development backs up into this access road. Is that true?
I'm sorry?
Looks like from the park, from the plan, it looks like there's parking from the existing development that backs up into the access road.
That's true. Some of the parking in the contractors' yard parcel backs into the proposed access easement.
That's what would be considered more of an unusual thing for an access road and a potential conflict and hazard.
So, thank you for that. From Lucas, who do we have here? Sorry. Good evening. For the record, my name is Joseph Orzal. I'm a professional wetland scientist with Lucas Environmental. We are the peer reviewer on behalf of the town for wetlands issues. Back in December, we had submitted a first round of comments based on our review of the 40B supplemental documents. We subsequently received responses to those comments. We can half our goal or so, as well as the revised site plans that we've been looking at that were dated January 31st. We have reviewed those documents and are in the process of finalizing our responses for the board. I am in a position to provide comments at this point that we will be submitting to the board. And I'm not sure how the board would like me to proceed as far as, you want me to go into each of the individual comments or just kind of focus on the more substantive issues that remain? A number of the comments that we had made initially, the applicant has agreed that those changes will be made on revised plans or revised documents. So I don't know if the commission would like me to get into those at all or just on our remaining or initial comment. Yeah, thank you. The, I'd say the ones where the applicant's response is basically, you know, like something to be delineated on the plan or something of that nature, where essentially they're agreeing to your comments, I don't really see a need to go through that. I'd say, you know, the things that you find, you know, more substantive or where there isn't that agreement yet, we should focus on those. Good, thank you. That's right, I will, I will focus on those. And would you like me to give the comment number also, if you want to refer to those? Yeah, if you could, that'd be great. So our comment number four is regarding where the proposed 20-foot-wide water line easement is located. Just wanted to reiterate that we have not reviewed that parcel as part of the previous wetland delineations on the, at the site, and that that will need to be delineated. I don't believe, based on topography, that there are likely to be any wetlands on that parcel, but that's, that site has not been looked at, that particular parcel has not been looked at as far as. So again, the 20-foot wide. Right, it's 20-foot wide water line easement that's located on the southern portion of the 125 Parkerville Road Lot. That's parcel ID 27, map 27 Lot 2. So that, but you're just, in short, you're, that hasn't. I'm just, I'm just noting that that hasn't been looked at yet. That will need to be looked at. But it doesn't appear that there is likely any wetlands on that parcel, but that will need to be looked at at a time when it's filed with the Conservation Commission or if the board would like that looked at ahead of time, we can do that. With regard to comment number six, this is regarding Vernal Pool Habitat located within Wetland A. And just wanted to reiterate that although maintenance within Wetland A was approved by the South Borough Conservation Commission, previously, the work was conditioned to prohibit any stump and root removal and restrict work in the wetland between March 1st and July 1st of any given year due to the presence of Vernal Pool Habitat and Vernal Pool species. Therefore, although the applicant's comment notes that the pool may, may or may not provide Vernal Pool habitat, the work that was approved was conditioned to maintain as much of the Vernal Pool habitat function as possible while allowing maintenance of stormwater features. So the Conservation Commission does consider that Vernal Pool, in Vernal Pool habitat, even though it is allowed to be maintained with minimal disturbance for stormwater functions. With regard to comment number 11, just again, reiterating that the applicant is working with the project civil engineer regarding Title 5 standards, so that will need to be addressed. Comment number 13, regarding work proposed in close proximity to wetlands, possibly altering wetland hydrology. The applicant had responded that the wetland or the hydrology feeding Wetland A would not be altered by the proposed work. However, there was no documentation or description of how that conclusion was reached. So we would request some additional information on, with sufficient information to support their conclusion. With respect to comment number 17, regarding the retaining walls proposed within the 20-foot no-build area, we are recommending the applicant provide a detail on the proposed retaining walls to demonstrate that the excavations for the wall footing will not require additional disturbance indicated. We have had experience with other retaining wall projects that are in close proximity to wetlands that required greater than anticipated excavation or the construction of the footings for the walls. So that should be looked at ahead of time to make sure that there will not be further encroachment necessary for those walls. With respect to comment number 19, it was regarding invasive species management. The applicant has commented that they could expand the existing isolated or invasive species management plan to incorporate the entire site. That's a plan that was approved by the Conservation Commission on a previous order of concessions. We agree that that is appropriate for the site and incur that with that. With regard to comment number 21. That was with regards to a potential for impermeable or clay barrier needed for the underground utilities. And we had asked for additional information to be provided on that to make sure that there's not a route for groundwater loss that may be supplying the adjacent wetlands. The applicant has indicated that they will be consulting with a civil engineer to provide further information on that. With regard to comment number 24. This is with respect to assessing wildlife habitat and corridors on the site. We had recommended that the applicant provide a wildlife habitat evaluation. The applicant has agreed to do a wildlife habitat evaluation. But also noted that most of the species using the area are human-adapted species, which is probably true for most of the species. However, species such as Vernal Pool species and salamanders are not human-adapted and may be impacted by proposed activities. We concur that the wildlife habitat evaluation and a Vernal Pool migration study, which the applicant is also proposing, are necessary to determine potential impacts. Comment 21A is more along those same lines.
21 or 24?
I'm sorry, 24A. We had also recommended a migration study of the Vernal Pool area for Vernal Pool organisms to be conducted this spring. The applicant is agreeing to do that. We would like to emphasize that that needs to be done immediately, very soon. We are getting into the Vernal Pool migration season. To do a migration study, you need to set up steel fences, pitfall traps along the fences. And if you miss, you know, the beginning part of the migration, you may not capture the, the full migration that is occurring on the site. So we are requesting that the applicant submit a migration study plan to the board as soon as possible for peer review. If that could be submitted by next week, that would be great. I'm going to be out of town for until next Wednesday. But if we have it by next Wednesday, I could review it immediately.
The, the plan for the evaluation?
For the migration study plan. And once we have a look at that, then the applicant can certainly proceed with getting the necessary steel fences and pitfall traps installed. I know we're, we're supposed to get another cold spell, so I think it's probably going to hold off for a little bit as far as the Vernal Pool migrations, but we're, we're getting close.
Okay.
We also would recommend that any results of that migration study be submitted not only to the board but to the Conservation Commission because they would be interested in those for their review.
So just if I could interrupt briefly, that from the Conservation Board agent said the board may want to consider requiring Lucas Environmental to accompany the applicants representative during the Vernal Pool assessment. Is that something you're agreeable to?
Yes, we are agreeable with that. With regard to comment 24D. Just want to add that under the bylaw, wildlife habitat is a protected wetland value. And as stated in section 1.2 of the bylaw regulations, the purpose of the bylaw is to protect the wetland water-related resources and the adjoining land areas, i.e. the buffer zone in the town of South Borough by controlling activities deemed by the conservation to have significant or cumulative effect upon wetland values. Therefore, activity, end quote. Therefore, an activity within adjoining land area that may impact a wetland value, such as wildlife habitat, is subject to local jurisdiction and the burden of proof is on the applicant to demonstrate that the proposed buffer zone activities will not impact the protected wetland values. Therefore, that is the reason for the need for the habitat evaluation as well as the migration study. Just want to clarify where that is spelled out in the bylaw regulations. With regard to comment number 25. We had requested the area of disturbance proposed within the 100-foot buffer zone and the 20-foot no-work zones, which the applicant provided. Would like to add to that requesting the applicant to provide the percentage of those areas that's being impacted also. We have totals, but we don't have the percentage of those areas that is being proposed to be impacted. With regard to comment number 26. That was a comment regarding alternatives analysis. The applicant had stated in their response that the plan before us is the preferred alternative. We are recommending that the applicant provide further, or further demonstrate that there is no practical alternative that is viable that could reduce the amount of work proposed within the 20-foot no-work zones. I know the Conservation Commission really likes to keep work outside that 20-foot no-work zone. If there's a viable alternative that could do that, that should be explored and/or reasons why that cannot be done should be elaborated. And final comment, well, not the final, but comment number 27 was just regarding native species. Just want to add there that some of the species that are proposed are not considered native, proposed within the buffers are not considered native on the Billaboni website. Although they are, they may be naturalized. It's just good practice to avoid the use of non-native plantings within the buffer zone. None of the species proposed is invasive, so that's, that's not an issue. With regard to comment 28. We are noting that the applicant is required to assess impacts from road salt and fertilizer loading to all the wetland areas, not just Wetland A. As we had recommended previously, we recommend the plans be revised to include the proposed snow storage areas. And we recommend that the use of fertilizers be excluded within 20 feet of the wetlands and conditioned within the 100-foot buffer zone. And I have a couple of minor comments on some plan typos or changes that I don't know that I need to get into at this point. And I think that covers my comments and certainly answer any questions if the commission or the board has any.
Thank you. Questions?
I, I don't really have a question except for counsel, if you can commit to getting him the, it was the migration study plans?
Migration plan.
Yeah.
Migration study plan.
You said you need it by next Wednesday?
Well, it would be great if, if we could have it by next Wednesday. That would allow me to take a look at it Wednesday and if things are warming up, get the, get going on installing the necessary.
I'll have Mr. Rosin.
Hi, good evening. Ryan Rosin, I'm with Goddard Consulting Wildlife Fileologist. So we do have that pretty much completed draft of that and we were planning to submit it to Joe and the board either end of this week or Monday or Tuesday, beginning of next week. So we, we do know there's a time crunch, so we're working on that. Great.
Thank you. I just, while you're there, one of the items from again, the Conservation Agent regarding the invasive species management plan. Her comment is that ISMP should be provided for this project as approvals under DEP number 290-1107 cannot be, in quotes, extended to provide impact to this project regardless of their status of an approved document. A separate, separate document must be provided for submittal under the comprehensive permit application.
I, I would agree. That document cannot be extended, but I think what I was trying to say was that the, the plan that is spelled out in that document can be submitted, expanded for this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
On a separate plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions over there?
Um, just, just for clarity, so when you guys talk about the area that potentially has Vernal Pool habitat, that's just a detention based in the A-series flags? Alright, alright.
I should have asked, sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
That is correct.
Okay.
The, no evidence of Vernal Pool use was observed in the other stormwater basin.
And again, and that has an existing order of conditions that allows them to maintain that?
It does.
Okay, alright, thank you. That's it.
Just a quick question. So in, in the last project that we did with respect to the 20-foot no disturb, and obviously I'm, I'm looking at the CONCOM letter too, they take that really seriously. We tried to and the applicant did a great job, same applicant, of moving things out of the 20-foot. I see, I think you, they noted that Ryan was at 7,000, roughly 7,000 square feet of work in the 20? 6,000, it looked like 6,900 or whatever. Is there, is there any way maybe this between you and Civil to try and get that down? There was a really great effort to do that and, and limit some of that? Or to, if some of it is already degraded areas, then maybe that can get exempted? I, I mean, I'm not telling anyone how to design it, it's the board's decision. But I know the applicant made a really good effort last time around to take all that out in the last project. And I know the CONCOM takes that stuff really seriously. So I know the board took it really seriously last time as well. So I think an effort between now and what we see next to try and limit that to the maximum extent possible to get things out of that 20 would be appreciated. It may not be possible in all areas, but that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I mean, that was clearly noted by the, in the letter from Conservation Agent. And I assume you have as well.
Yes, and it's noted here. I do know that this site is much tighter than our last one, unfortunately. So there's not much more room to work with, but we'll take another look at it and see if we can come up with anything.
Okay, thank you.
No hands raised online.
Okay. We can take a, thank you.
John Palmer, again, 131 Parkerville, Director Butter. I didn't, I didn't catch it in your comments, but I saw it in your written comments. I think it's comment number 11 pointing out that the, the current septic system design is in violation of Mass Total 5 regulations. I'm surprised there's been no discussion on, on that point.
Yeah, I had, I did mention that one briefly. The applicant is working with the project civil, civil engineer to review the Title V standard setbacks. So we don't have any new information on that at this point.
But what is, what is the violation?
The wetlands of the site are classified as tributary to a Class A public water supply and, and outstanding resource water. So we had requested the applicant evaluate the Title V minimum setback requirements of 100 feet to the soil absorption system, system under the septic system regulations. So the response was that that is being reviewed.
My understanding that that would require a variance at the state level? If that septic system design is within 200 or under?
So, I mean, I, I, I understand the concern, but I think what I get from this is they're aware of it and they're working on how that can be resolved. Like you're not, you're not at a point where you have Title V problems. There, there's something that they need to work around and I might paraphrase incorrectly?
The issue was brought up by your civil peer review and we, we have a difference in opinion. We're trying to, you know, see if we can resolve it with your civil peer review. You'll get a response eventually from your civil peer review as to whether we resolve it. And then we can take it from there, alright?
Okay.
We're aware of it, which is a different opinion as to the designation.
Yeah.
The effect.
Okay.
It's a good point that your wetland consultant mentioned it, you know, but it's really was in noted in your civil peer review. We don't agree with it, that doesn't mean that that means we're right, but we're pursuing it diligently and trying to resolve. And next time we have civil peer review, we hope to have an answer.
Okay.
That satisfies the civil peer reviewer and the board. If we can't, then we'll have to deal with it separately.
Okay, Mr. Palmer, how does that, does that satisfy you for now? You could?
We're waiting for process.
Correct, right.
Okay.
But thank you for raising it.
Paul Carter, 6 Hillside Avenue, I'm not in a butter. Looking at the plans, I couldn't find or understand where the existing septic system leaching field is and where the reserve area is. And I couldn't find where the proposed leaching area is or where the reserve area is for that. I could find the sewer lines, but at the ends of the sewer lines, I didn't see any leaching area, which would be important to the location of buildings, the location of roads. I didn't see it.
Sure, just briefly, there's discussion of existing and proposed leaching areas. There on the existing lower parking area, there are two large squares in this area here about at the corner of Fireburg's property, just off of it. There's an existing primary septic system leaching area indicated on the plans. Beyond that, to the east towards Parkerville is the reserve area. That's the system serving the existing building and which would serve if there is a contractors yard use on that parking lot area. It would serve that. In fact, only a fraction of it is necessary to serve that because it was designed to serve that office building when it was expected to be, you know, chock full and, and that potential generated flow is much greater than the self-storage facility that's there now. The proposed leaching areas for the septic, septic system for these units are these rectangles. I'm sorry, I've got the plan with everything on it, but there is a plan that has more stuff turned off. There's two rectangular areas here that are the proposed leaching area. The issue in question with regard to wetland setback, there's a wetland over here. It's actually an isolated wetland, which was confirmed as part of the earlier order of conditions issue. Title V says you need to be 100 feet with a leaching area from a wetland which borders a tributary. Title V further defines a tributary as a definite channel in the ground and it then refers you to three or four different references to decide what are the officially recognized channels and tributaries. Well, this wetland has no channel in it. There is no stream channel in here, is an isolated wetland. And on that basis, it is our contention that the standard setback from a regular wetland of 50 feet is what is applicable. But we went back and forth with the other peer reviewer about this. What we agreed is that we would abide by DEP's opinion in this, in this matter. And we've been trying to get them to officially write something that is their opinion to decide.
Have they visited the site to be able to write an opinion?
I guess I don't know that the, the two different people from DEP I've spoken to have, but. I guess I don't know that the the two different people from DEP I've spoken to have, but trying to get, trying to get them off the dime.
Okay, so basically looking for that determination, somebody to.
Yeah, I.
Negotiate.
With with many attached documents and hoping to have them write an email back saying, yes, I I think I agree with your interpretation. They had done, I would have had it here.
Sort of an arbiter.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
That's what I meant before.
Yeah, I kind of picked up that what he was talking about is exactly what you were just talking about, correct?
Yeah. That's why it's still up in the air.
Okay. Do you have, is there any, are there any other of the points raised here that you wanted to address?
No, I think.
Okay.
I think your reviewer indicated where we were and.
Yeah, okay. And we don't, we still don't have anybody raising a hand.
Nope, no hands raised.
Nobody else in the public? Anybody from the public want to say a few words, okay? Okay, so based on where we are, there's not, there's continued work that has to happen, you're right. Hang on a second, I want to just. I would normally have Laura here, I have to rely on myself to find it.
Oh, we would suggest, I believe you have a meeting on March nineteenth. A regular scheduling meeting.
Yeah, that sounds correct.
Which is, I think, three weeks and perhaps.
Second here. Yeah, she did say, yeah, March nineteenth.
I likely won't be available that night and may be available via Zoom, which is fine. It's just with the Mullins rule, we'll have you, Michael, Doug. Is that enough? Because Paul missed.
If Paul, yeah, since Paul hasn't dialed in.
And then wait.
Paul sent an email, I think I got it, and I think maybe it was also to Laura, saying that he was up in the air, like literally on the plane.
Yeah, not a figure of speech, yeah.
And that when he landed, he was gonna see if he could sign in, but obviously that that hasn't happened.
Laura commented on that in her email today.
Jamie, Doris and Paul with all these Mullins rules.
So as long as we have Doug here.
Yeah.
We have Doug, Doris, Mike.
I'm remote.
David.
Remote's okay, and I can certainly.
And I'll, I'll try to come remote, I just don't know if I'll be able to.
So you'll be able to attend at least remotely?
I'm hoping to. I will try my best, but I can't commit.
Is that his? Is this the fellow that's not here up in the air, is this his first miss?
Second, yeah, and it would be my second if I can't make it on the nineteenth.
Anyone else, everyone else is still intact.
Um, pardon me, that's bad, but I'm not going to miss because it's in that calendar unless there's something unforeseen. So I don't know what's unforeseen.
We get to a situation.
We'll deal with it at the time, I guess.
Laura can let us know and we can, you know, reschedule.
Yeah, if we have to reschedule, let's just keep in mind that the thirty first, I think, is the current deadline, so.
We can extend that to April thirtieth.
Okay.
So give us some reading room.
You'll send something in the law.
Yeah, I'll do it tomorrow.
Perfect, thanks, George.
I don't want to put a wrinkle in it, but we we should hear on extending remote meetings by the end of this month also.
Yeah.
That's could be a wrinkle.
It runs out, the last special act runs out, so there's a bill. The extension for remote meetings only goes through March of twenty twenty five. They're gonna kick the can down the road.
I feel strongly they will and they and they're gonna make it permanent is what I understand.
There's an omnibus bill, but that's not gonna make it by the end of March, so they'll probably just do a special act to extend this one.
Okay.
You know, they're having all these town meetings now, you know, in terms of federal issues, but they have enormous participation, you know, in terms of it, you know, they're doing it virtually here by phone. I mean, it's a good idea, you know, very, you know, if you want to get, you know, public input, make it as available as you can.
I think, I think the board generally agrees with that, it helps, it helps a lot of people in the public and the applicants as well, because you don't have to drive a hundred miles to be here.
We're not going back.
No, I agree. I think it's been.
Been phenomenal, you get, you get more volunteers and more participation. There's reasons you need to be live, but it also allows for that.
Yeah, and if I understand what Laura was saying, that, you know, I would have to be here and I don't have a problem being here. So as long as I'm here and Laura's here, even if we think we have other people that are remote, we'll be fine, so.
I meant nothing to do with this hearing or anything, just.
Yeah, understood, right, right. I don't.
The misses become less misses.
Correct.
They can participate.
Right.
No, it's, it's a reason applications don't move forward.
Yes.
That, so.
You have to keep jumping around.
Right, it's, it's a, it's a public complaint.
Okay. So with, I don't think we have anything else really to discuss on this one in particular then.
I don't think so.
So you're, you will send something about extending to the eighth thirtieth. And we need a motion to to continue the meeting to March nineteenth, and I'm gonna say seven forty five P M. Because we already have seven, seven fifteen, seven thirty.
Uh, I make a motion to continue the hearing, uh, March nineteenth at seven forty five P M.
Second.
All right, motion to continue to March nineteenth, seven forty five P M has been made with a second, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Jamie?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Laura's?
Aye.
Mike? Williams, aye, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more. You can add those easements too?
No, I will listen well before.
Oh, no, no, other, the one for one twenty term.
Yep.
Yeah.
We're gonna discuss them now, I'm assuming, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to work.
Yep, yes.
Right, we're not done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the.
Yeah, the, the.
Well, it's an agenda item, yeah. Are we, are we gonna have a, are we gonna discuss, it's an agenda item, I don't, I don't know if you have to continue it or.
Um.
Or talk about it.
It's not, it's not a hearing.
Oh, it's really, I got it.
Discussion item, so.
Yeah, so it's just, there's a Conservation Commission weighed in or the Conservation Agent, and I just haven't had the time.
I understand, do you think we'll, we'll just have comments back regarding the plan at some point?
But my hope, I'm looking at it as to form, so.
Okay.
You know, and making sure that it corresponds with the expectations and the decision.
Do you want to just kick the discussion item down to the nineteen?
I think it probably makes sense, right?
I'm, I'm gonna kick the can on that one.
It, it, it does, I. Yeah.
May not be here.
My next meeting is like three in the morning.
The one.
I'm on speakerphone.
I am, I am kind of curious about where, you, you, you saw the, the letter from the Conservation Agent.
Regarding the easement or subdivision plan?
Easement, yeah.
I have not.
Okay, yeah, there's just, there is an, I, I think what she's talking about is parcel C, there's a, there's like a block to the west of it.
The recirculating sand filter?
Is that, oh, that's, yeah, okay, yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, I, I mean, there's.
I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah. Yeah, again, they noted a couple, you know, typos, but yeah, there, there are things that that should be cleared up, but if you want to, you want to hold that off till the nineteenth.
Sure, yeah, I mean, if there's a.
I get, if I have my comments to the extent I have any, before then, I'll get them over to you.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, when, when did that email from the Conservation?
Oh.
We don't seem to have it.
That's, it's pretty recent.
All right, so there's a good chance we haven't been forward, so.
Yeah. Um. Okay, I know he wants to make a comment. Yeah, I, I mean, I, there was also another email that came in today and there's, there's a lot there and I, they'll just, we don't really have time to do it justice. If you, if you want to speak, that's fine, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think we're gonna go through everything in a lot of detail, but are there some comments you'd like to make? I know you sent an email today. Yeah, we, we only, we only got them today, yeah. Yeah.
Well, it's not a hearing, so.
No, it's, it's not a hearing, but if you could just.
Yeah, great question.
If you want to make, be brief and to the point here, that would be appreciated. But we, I, I thought that was already a settled piece.
But last.
I, I cut, maybe to cut the shore, I, we, I agree with him.
Okay.
And that subdivision plan needs to be revised.
Okay.
Okay, and we know that. Okay. What it really was, was, you know, as built A and R plan.
Yes.
It didn't get morphed into what your concerns are, I agree with you completely.
I actually, I have.
I, I looked into it some more.
I'm, I'm not so sure, Lou. I think that the twenty foot standard is not applicable.
What twenty foot standard?
Well, that, that's what his comment is.
I haven't even looked.
Oh.
I thought that was in the.
Yeah, I thought we dealt with that.
I thought we did, I thought we did that.
About the plan. At a thousand feet, needs to, we agree, needs to be revised to be a subdivision.
Okay.
Okay, I haven't seen these Jane, I appreciate you looking at that, okay? So I think your comments will be better served when we submit the revise.
Oh, you're gonna submit a revised subdivision plan?
Yes.
Just the last thing is, I think they could do an A and R, but they'd need a frontage waiver from the Board of Appeals and they'd need a frontage waiver from, if you could just look at it, sir.
Yeah, but that, that's not the law in that if they, if you can't do an A and R on reduced frontage through a variance, that would then tip them back into subdivision. So which is where we ended up anyway.
Well, if they can provide a subdivision road outlined with a right of way, that would certainly be preferable, and I think you could.
No, that's.
Right, but.
That's what you're thinking now? Yes. Okay.
But we're not.
Not what?
That's not what the plan shows. That, that's not what the approved project shows, we've already been through this.
We have been through.
A lot, I'm happy to talk to you offline, we waived frontage zoning, there doesn't have to be a new subdivision road.
We're not, I think we're talking at cross purposes here.
Right, he's suggesting there should be a subdivision road, there's no new subdivision.
I agree, but the plan needs to be revised.
Yeah, I just didn't see where it was formally waived from the Z B A and from the planning board, if you could just review it, I'd, I understand.
Yeah, do you want to keep it? Okay.
I think. Okay. Okay, so, yeah, we, we had, as far as the agenda goes tonight, that, again, this is a discussion item, I appreciate you staying for it. Upcoming meetings, February and March, now, hold on. We actually provided that, if I just go back, again, I think our next one is March nineteenth. Three public hearings, we just scheduled this two fifty to continue to seven forty five. April sixteenth, likely have a couple of public hearings, as she knows of two or three in the works. And again, nothing, as you mentioned, Doris, nothing concrete for remote meetings after March thirty one, so whatever your schedule after three thirty one will need. Myself and a quorum in person.
Okay.
Unless something changes, as we discussed.
No.
Do we have anything else, are we set?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
I think we're pretty set. Okay, lacking Paul, I think we need somebody.
Make a motion for a public hearing or.
No.
Whoever does.
No, just, we, we, we can. We didn't have another one, so we just need to.
Close our meetings.
Need to.
We'll just make it the longest. If you want to add very light gray to the other stuff.
Doug?
What?
See what happens, Paul? All right, motion to adjourn has been made with a second, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Jamie?
Aye.
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Williams, aye, and Mike?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Brady Pelgro.